Call the meeting to order. Today is a work session and what will be discussing this evening will be A discussion of City Hall and Public Safety Facilities Phase Two. And then be part of that with our concerns and issues that are pertinent to each of the commissioners here tonight. Those will be the items that we will discuss. And let's go with item A. It will be Vance or Andy or both?
Both.
Both, okay. All right. Andy, good to see you.
I'm just going to walk you just back through the scope of work that we completed, I guess in 2017. And just kind of go back over that and then please stop me if you have questions along the way so we can address any questions or concerns as we move forward. So just a little summary of the meetings that we held with the steering committee. So I've just kind of provided a little bit of an outline of the quantities and the dates and then the general topics that were covered at each of these. And we have the minutes of each of them if we have specific questions on any specific one. As we started off, we talked about generally what we were trying to accomplish and the scope of services that we were brought on for and then how the steering committee would help us through this process. And so we began with the whole discussion of what is consensus basing. And so we walked through this dialogue at the end of the day of what we were trying to do. And I'm not going to go into detail in a lot of this unless you have specific questions. But ultimately, we kind of came up with these four points of can the committee come to a qualified yes, I accept the decision, I can live with the decision, I don't fully agree, but I will not block or support it. And that was the goal going in from the beginning and we carried that through throughout all of our meetings. This was the scope of work that we had outlined for the commission when we were brought on board, is we were going to look at what the condition of the existing facilities, what the program and the departments that should be located in City Hall, how much space or square footage is required to accommodate that program, what are the potential design options, what are the design pros and cons, what are the costs of each of those options, and then what other projects could be included within the city that could impact the overall costs and they'll schedule this project, how could the project be funded, and then ultimately the conclusions of the scope of work. And we walked you through at the end of this kind of each of these different ones and what the conclusions were and kind of highlighted the different elements of each of these different scopes of work. We talked about the programs and we even brought you early on in the process, walked through our methodology of how we met with each of the departments, how the program did not have growth for staff included in it, and we looked at how the departments worked within the building, how they worked together, and then ultimately came up with what that square footage could be and illustrated that depending how that laid out, the different options, there's obviously some efficiencies that could occur or may not occur that would could either shrink or grow that specific program. Then we also looked at the public safety side, which included the police and the fire and EMS. We ultimately came up with an overall program. We benchmarked that against what had been done by a prior scope of work, actually had less square footage at the end of the day of how we moved forward. We looked at a variety of different options. Some of these options actually came out of our discussion with the steering committee. We had A through F. We worked through each of the costs, the pros and cons of each of these with the group, ultimately coming up with what our recommendation was. And I'm not going to kind of take you through each of these, but we developed costs that were within our final report, outlining the square footage cost that we thought was appropriate for each of the scopes of work, and then also the soft cost of the non-construction costs that go on top of it to ultimately come up with the total project cost. So option A, option B. And I understand there's been some question, and I want to make sure I address any of that on this specific construction cost of option B. And if I think I understand what the issue is, but please correct me if I'm wrong, is the potential that we've doubled up on what the square footage of the apparatus bay is. And let me just kind of walk you through my math. What we've done is taken $12 a square foot to the existing 10,000 square feet of the existing apparatus bay because we realized and recommended some specific improvements being done to that space, so that was about $120,000. We had new construction of both first floor and second floor for police, fire, and EMS. It had a square footage of $285 a square foot. We then added those up to come up with what our site total and parking lot were, realizing we needed improvements to the overall site, additional parking on that site, not knowing how much of the existing hospital lot we could borrow depending on what that ultimately use is, so we had some program dollars in for that at $10 a square foot. And then also if the hospital became a separate owner, that existing apparatus bay is tied to the electrical system and it's backfed through the hospital and the generator. So we recognized we needed to separate that, provide a new generator, new utilities to that space, so we also included that $25 a square foot for those, for that area to ultimately come up with that 716. You add all that up, it comes up to 6.446 million. You divide that by the 28,000 square feet and that comes up with the average dollar per square foot of $225 a square foot. Does that address any of the questions or concerns that were on that?
The way the book, the report appeared, it looked like that the 10,000 square foot existing apparatus bay was included in the total square footage again for the building. So that's where the question came up, looking at the new construction and backing out the costs. That was where, since the square footage times particular square foot cost didn't equal the total, you know, there was no way to compare. It was listed in one point that the 10,000 square foot apparatus bay included the, was in the 28,000 square feet, but then it appeared that the figure of 28,000 was all considered new construction in the other table.
And this is where showing your work like in math class helps out that solution?
Right.
And so at the end, at the back end of that and the appendix is this specific spreadsheet that illustrates how those numbers break down?
Yeah. Didn't see that cross-reference in there and just looking at the presentation.
My apologies.
No, no, it's fine.
Just want to make sure we had that clear. So we also walked through all the costs. This option A actually came out of discussions with the steering committee and ultimately was the one that was moved forward as a recommendation, is some of the concerns with parking within the area. So it's consolidating the public safety building on half of that existing lot and so we could have parking space in a two-story, well, actually three-story structure within that area. So again, we looked at all the different options. We put together costs for those. We looked, as I said, the professional, the project soft costs that go along with it. We then had the recommendation that we brought forward to the commission. We talked about how the projects could be funded and other projects within the city. We had those discussions. We brought in bond counsel to talk about what enterprise funds are, matching funds, general capital projects, how those are funded within the city. Again, talking about the general purpose sales tax that was here, the education sales tax, had a lot of dialogue of how that potentially could be used. And then ultimately came up with what the conclusions were, what the majority of the steering committee had reached the consensus on. And we had these listed out and walked you through them of ultimately having the 19 City Hall completely renovated, as you've been discussing, the public safety building adjacent to that, the temporary city hall, and the moving forward with that. And then ultimately we had the not to exceed the $16 million as the conclusion for that. And then moved forward with public town hall meetings, which we had in the fall of 17 also. So with that, I just want to open up to any specific questions that you may have and be able to address anything on that original scope of work.
The questions that I might have is there's been some information out, you know, how we arrived at this point. I think you've covered everything that you needed to cover. And I also read that option B and I read the narrative of that. And that's where I think there was the disconnect that Leonard had already covered. So, you know, we've got a lot of issues that we need to address and it's going to be a balancing act here. But I do appreciate you clearing up that misconception that I had also on that. Gary, do you have any comments to make?
You know, the only comment, the only one that pops to mind right at the moment is the one I've said before, and that is when we put this committee together, 15 people, I was blown away that they came up with a consensus I didn't think would ever happen. But then some of the people who are on that committee no longer support the project. So I was a little confused by that disconnect. But I was told that those of you on the committee were not made aware of these costs. So it's not like, you didn't say, oh yeah, 16 million is a fair deal for this. You said this is a good solution, but the costs weren't really discussed at that point?
Well, as far as sitting on the committee, there wasn't, there wasn't a dollar amount set that as to what this project, what this project identified would actually cost.
Right, okay.
So...
So that's why some of the committee members are now saying, wait, timeout. This is not a good plan because it's just too costly.
Right. Some of us, while we were in the steering committee, questioned the cost, which was excessive. We also questioned the size of the facility, but like you said, going into this, we were, these were the options that we were given. And he's gone through the consensus part of this. And I'm sure there were people that fell into each of those categories. So the end result that I took out of it, I was not in favor of spending that kind of money. I don't know how we'd even begin to come up with that kind of money. My, what I came out of it was that we felt like, one, that the 1916 City Hall facility had value, still had value, that it was an anchor downtown, and then that building, we should look into renovating that building and reuse of that building. And the second part of that, we felt like there was a facility that needed to be built to house the public safety part of the group. And we looked at that and we gave information on the background of Building D. You know, initially, the operating, the operating costs and the maintenance costs, the operations were figured out when it was presented back in April of 2016. The operating costs were figured at $80,000 and the maintenance costs were identified as $60,000. I could be off a couple of thousand dollars, but that's pretty close. So we were looking at $140,000. Today, those costs are three times that amount in Building D. I think we budgeted $432,000 plus dollars for operating and maintenance expenses at Building D now. So, but at the time, when we looked at all this, we looked at, that's what I took away from that. And then, and then we more or less agreed that felt like, for a lot of reasons, including those operations and maintenance costs for the building, the fact that it was, it was a lot bigger sized, we felt like, they felt like we needed to go ahead and market that building and actually build a facility and incorporate the 1916 City Hall. So we looked at all kinds of options. We eliminated a lot of options. And I think the last two that were standing were A and B. And I addressed, among other people did that were on the steering committee, about the cost, that it was excessive. And in the end, A had more support than B did. But we all agreed to the guidelines of consensus and that's what we went by. But at no time did the steering committee, were they ever given a guideline as the cost cannot exceed X amount of dollars. So in the end, we were giving, had to come down to an option that we could agree to some level, either you liked it, you could live with it, you didn't care for one of those three or four. And that's what we came up with because we agreed that we needed to come up with a decision of some sorts. And then we could always, when I talked to you, when you were part of the, when you were the facilitator for the committee, you said that the cost and the scope, the cost and the size could actually be massaged down. We could always work on that and come up with something that would be more realistic for us as a community to get behind. So that's where I'm at. So that may explain, you know, my part on the steering committee. And there's some other members that were on that committee that are in the audience tonight. So, you know, that's where I'm coming from. So does that, that's great.
No, I think you're correct, Gary. There was not any committee member that said we need to spend as much as we can. I think every committee member was concerned about the overall cost. And we presented costs in a variety of different ways in each of the different meetings and nobody was thrilled with any of the dollars. I think if we could build as much as we want, for as least as we could do it, I think that would be the, obviously, the solution that we could move forward. At the same time, we don't want to present to you costs that we don't feel are accurate in the market going forward for the size and the scope that we've talked about. But we always describe that as the city moves forward, ultimately the commission needs to decide what is the scope, what is that size and dollar amount, and provide a directive to, that it needs to fit within this, these guidelines.
The feasibility study wasn't the end, but it was a starting point. And you can't put, to get the best option, the best solution, you can't put restrictions at the beginning. You've got to explore all the possibilities and you've got to do what was done in the committee. The report covered that. It looked at no restrictions on space, no restrictions on multi-use spaces, and that's where the cost was generated to the 16 million. And then the reality comes from looking at that, what can we afford? How do we meet the need to go forward? And, you know, we've seen a lot of numbers through the years from different plans, two different renovation proposals for City Hall, and then of course, the Building D proposal, I think in June of 2016, we had a comparative study. 2014, there was a design concept for existing City Hall and utilities started at $39,000 one year to 2016 for the same building, $70,000, and utilities for Building D of $80,000. And the numbers are all over the place in those studies. And of the two renovations where we had actual data on a building, they've doubled. So there's some inconsistencies in our figures and even in the construction costs that we've had in the past. I think this is the first real numbers that we've seen to give us some direction, but the number for Building D renovation and the facility plan hadn't changed from the initial 2016 numbers. I think from going, going to the next phase, we need to look realistically on how the cost impacts and where's the money coming from. Piper Jeffrey gave us a broad proposal initially when Andy did the original presentation. And I think that's where we need to have them come back as we start getting to the next phase and work with us to get a financing plan that we can look at. There's a lot of things that we need to look at financing for the next phase, like Louis mentioned, the possibility of selling Building D, that that could come into the project, but also it can allow multi-staging of construction too.
You mentioned the financing. Of course, we've looked at that. We just did a report. And we've also had just recent discussions with Piper Jeffrey to look at various levels of funding and how we do that. Of course, if you have any questions regarding what we presented the last special session on the City Hall on the 31st about the financing, special use sales tax and how that's proposed, but that's obviously the funding. We didn't look at raising property taxes to fund whether it's 12 million or 16 million. But anyway, we've had those conversations with Piper Jeffrey. In fact, the principal at Piper Jeffrey that did those things for us actually has left Piper Jeffrey. He's in another firm now, so, and have made contact with him as well. But anyway, we agree that we need to continue to follow it up as we look at what's the scope of this project and how much, you know, we won't know how to fund it until we know kind of what it's going to cost.
If I remember right, when I was sitting in one of those chairs back, and I think Jim Rutledge was the city clerk at that time, but on that special use sales tax of one cent, if I'm wrong, correct me, and I very well could be, but it was initially set up for quarter, quarter of a cent for ADA, a quarter of a cent for bond debt reduction, a quarter of a cent for streets and sidewalks, and a quarter of a cent for facilities. And we're spending a quarter of that for bond debt reduction, but we also are spending the, we've also used up the other quarter of a cent. Is that not right? That's paying down bond debt from street projects that we've already completed. Would that be right?
Yeah, there's some, there's debt service in there, obviously, that we transfer to pay off of those bonds. And when we look at the debt and you look, read Mike's report and Piper Jeffrey's initial report, the 1% we have now is not going to cover it. We would have to look again to repurpose what we have now, restructure that, those quarter percents so we could, you know, put more towards this project. And secondly, we would have to pick up the 1% that goes to the schools when that comes off in '31 and '32, 2031 and 2032. So yeah, we'd have to restructure that whole special use sales tax. And that was what, I mean, that's what Greg Varenberg and Piper Jeffrey showed in his graph, if you remember, and that's what we talked about with Mike as well. That's key. Obviously, the citizens have to reapprove in 2022 for that, but then it's changed that allocation formula.
Okay. As far as changing that allocation though, first of all, that's going, we'll have to sell that to the voters to approve that because if they don't approve that, then we...
Exactly.
We don't, we don't have a plan B.
And that's, and that's what you do and you go to the voters, but you have a plan, of course, that they can vote on.
Right.
And if you're borrowing money, what's the plan here, you know, like show the facility and what they're voting on. But if you'll remember in Mike's report and Greg's, that quarter percent that went for debt reduction back to the general fund, that was not, that was considered to be keeping that. We wouldn't change that.
Now, the special use sales tax, when it comes up to another vote, it needs to be restructured.
That's right, yeah.
But a quarter percent, the way it was presented, a quarter percent in each category without identifying the project and the scope and the amount of the project, you generate funds, but then you also generate the tendency that I've got it, I'll spend it. Where if you identify exactly the ADA funds with the cost and forget the quarter percent, then you accomplish something in more efficient use of the money. The same with building improvements and roads and streets when you get a direct commitment on that. So, you know, going forward with the next vote, we're going to have to have restructuring to identify, in fact, the bonds that are issued for streets now under that quarter percent would fall over into the other quarter percent of debt reduction. And then if funds from that is going to service this project, then we identify the amount and we come up with a better implemented plan. So, you know, we might have to have multiple funding sources if we use sales tax and a bond. But, you know, one of the key steps is going to be identifying the actual cost of the project and to go forward. And, you know, right now, there's, you take the two facilities, we've got an equipment building and we've got the 1916 City Hall, is how do we best utilize what we've got? That's one way to go. And then the other is still with the 1916, when you look at the operating costs that have been presented to us before on the building, it's considerably less than Building D. So any money that's been gone to operate that building comes into debt reduction or servicing a project once the building is sold. Then, you know, if the tenants move out and we have other facilities, then the building becomes mothballed and we don't have that service commitment to that building. But, you know, we've, we've been able to take a building that we thought was going to cost to operate, what was it, $40,000 to $80,000 a year with a $100,000 lease payment, and see that now we need $432,000 to operate it, and we've been able to do it. So if we can turn it around and not put that money in operating a building, but put it into a debt service plan for the next project, the, the operating costs of Building D are going to go up with the type of mechanical systems. The boiler chillers and the controls are quite sophisticated and they're quite expensive when you start dealing with maintenance. Any new construction, we would use presumably split systems, forced air systems, it would be of commercial grade, but very similar to a residence with fresh air intake. So the maintenance on it is much simpler. The cost of replacement, the cost of repairs is less. We can get that all done in town service. So, you know, we're saving a lot of ongoing costs by the type of systems any new construction would have. And so there's a lot of ongoing cost savings in our future, future work that's not going to be where we are, but we've got to look at the next phase of getting, and like I said, this is what was completed in the master plan was a broad look at options. And now that we go forward with preliminary design phase and design development, then working drawings, it gives us time to refine the program to bring our costs down that can be manageable. We don't have a growing tax base. We don't have, you know, to look at a need for increased staff in an office building for a declining population. And I don't think we're realistically to build space because if that does happen, there's other options, lease space to accommodate that, but if we can keep our initial commitment just to handle what we've got now, but look at where we're going to be in the, like visiting with an individual, so where are we going to be 20 years from now? And when you look back at the last 20 years, our, our population hasn't grown, but look at what technology has done. You know, you, you look at, through the, through the years, our requirement for space to accomplish the same task has gotten smaller from what the telephone industry, you look at Southwestern Bell in the 60s when they built that facility, what they needed for switchgear in that large two-story addition, now is all done in a very small room. Technology is only going to improve our operations and require less space for material storage and equipment and even personnel. So keeping our, our plan within a manageable square footage that's realistic and looking on into the future is going to help us not only now with construction costs, but operating costs in the future. costs in the future.
Can I make some comments in regards to that? From staff's perspective, you know, we've obviously been discussing that and, and where we're going and the scope of work and, and, and the needs. Now, I came here, the study was just wrapping up, I looked at the square foot needs, that's what was determined, the needs. And one thing I wanted to clear up that I've heard from staff is that, you know, that study was not based on what the staff said we want. It's, the firm just said, how many people do you have, how many desks do you have, and they kind of use a standard office square footage for that. And so, when we look at that, I think what we're hearing, staff is hearing, is that, all right, fire EMS has got to go somewhere else. Obviously, we can't put everybody back in the sixteen, nineteen sixteen building, but the effort it would be to put police, everybody else, keep police in, in the nineteen sixteen building. We just, we don't see, based on the square footage needs, how that's going to be accomplished, even with some different types of layout or even moving offices, certain personnel out to gain some square feet. I think you're really cramp, if you're reducing that, what square footage is now, I think you're really cramping the facility and not sure that that's a wise thing. As I think you mentioned, Leonard, as well, is we're, we're looking at making this building functional for the next twenty to fifty years, how it's going to function. And you're right, and maybe the population will turn around, those things fluctuate and things, but even though the population has gone down, our need for services, our demand for services hasn't gone down. And you're right, so this tax base, property tax base has to support that, that increasing demand, especially in public safety and on the police side. So, there, all those factors concern us, and we want to make sure that, that, you hear that from staff and where we're coming from. We don't want to have a facility that one staff can't be proud of, that doesn't find it inviting to work in, and creates more problems in terms of morale and efficiency than we have now in our temporary quarters, which were always billed as temporary, including the, the garages over there. And I touch on those garages, as everybody knows, those garages were sold as temporary to be moved to the sanitation facility, to, and they were sized to accommodate the garbage trucks, not the fire apparatus. And they have served, you know, well, I guess, in a temporary way. And I don't know if it, somebody believed at the time that they could be moved, that that building could be moved. And I know you mentioned last time that that's
Well, no, it, it can because of the type of system, it's an erector set, but the costs that you have in moving the building is you're going to spend as much just to leave it and build a new one.
But that's what I don't understand. And I, I don't want to go back in history too much, I want to move forward, because we, we need to get a scope of work here for the, for the architects to kind of get a gauge where we're going. And when I look at these numbers of Option B, fire EMS over here adding on to or adjacent to this, this current facility, it seems that you could build a whole new fire station for that amount, an efficient, modern fire station with the drive-through bays that you should have instead of turning it back in and so forth, a, a modern fire station. Again, we're not talking just for us as employees today. We are, you know, we are, but we're also looking down the road for employees. When you, when you have a structure that's, was not really built for fire, and EMS, it, it can affect the morale of employees, it can affect your recruitment, it can affect a lot of things, not just within city employees, but in the general way, and I'm getting a little off the subject here, but I've had economic development people, developers say, when they come to a city, they look at city services, how well do you provide city services? And I've had a developer tell me directly, if I don't see a community that invests in itself, why should I invest in that community? And I've actually heard another as, as well here, the same, same type of thing. So, one thing I've seen, and I, when I looked at this, and you talked about the report and the committee members that were on that, and the costs are all in there, what I, what I see is if you give the voters something to vote on, I think they would support public safety especially, and I think they support quality. I think that's what we've seen in this community. The voters, the community will support the quality project. Now, sixty million dollar figure, that's a scary figure when I first saw it as well, I, I agree. And I think we can work, work on, work on that, obviously, but we don't want to, we don't believe we need to do something that's not providing a, a modern, efficient workspace in City Hall and police and fire and public safety. I mean, that's just our perspective, again, looking long down the road, what's our vision used for the space?
Well, that's, you don't know what you've got until you look at a preliminary. You know, you can't look at that building and say it won't fit until you take the spaces and fit it in. You know, that's where we're at with the, the preliminary design phases, looking at what you've got. And any, any design, the easiest way to cut costs is reduce square footage ten percent, a small number, but significant in costs. And you look at, at some of the spaces that's planned in the program, it's like the commission meeting room was planned to go back in the building. It doesn't need to go back in the building.
Yeah, I, of course, have been in a lot of city halls, every city halls across the country, that's typically where you find the commission room. Now, yeah, you can continue to be here and so forth, but the commission room is multifunctional in, would be in the building. It's not just for commission meeting twice a month, of course, city court, where are we going to put city court? It's got to function somewhere. And it's a gathering place for employees as well, it can serve as a training room and a conference room. So, there's lots of advantages of having as well the commission meeting there. And then you would also, in there, you would have a, a, a modern technical system to be transparent on all the meetings, commission meetings, everything would be built in, and you could provide that a higher level of transparency. But
But we had two plans, we had two plans for renovating it that showed it all fitting in there. Now, one plan had an additional bay for one of the fire apparatuses, but the other plan showed everything fitting in there, and no one at that time said it wouldn't be big enough. So, you know, that's what I'm saying, we're, we're talking and we're looking, but it's been presented twice that everything could fit in that building. And now you take out fire EMS out of the building, and you're telling me that it's too small.
I, I don't know what study you're referring to, but the two studies that I've heard by two architectural firms are about the same, you need forty-six thousand square feet for those functions.
Look, and there's a plan, November two thousand fourteen, that showed cost estimates and had preliminary design plan for remodeling City Hall, and it showed everything fitting in there. In June fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, there's another plan remodeling City Hall, and everything fit in it too, with the addition of a, of another bay for apparatus, but that was built on county property. But everything fit in the building, and there was no mention that it wasn't big enough. And I think what we're looking with the next phase is to get into actual locating space in a reality of floor plans, because you look at the plan that had the, the construction across the street, north of the parking lot, it showed drive-through bays, but when you look at the, the contour and the elevation of the alley to the street, it won't work. The height is too different, too much. So, you know, each plan, those are concepts of what we got in the feasibility study to give us ideas, our next step is refinement.
Yeah, I agree, that's what we're trying to, that's our goal here, is trying to, to give the, the firm here
And we don't
Where we can go and
Yeah. And one of the things when we define the work, I think that's what we're to talk about, is we can say, you know, even with the historic nineteen sixteen building, we're talking about maintaining historic walls inside, but then if that compromises too much square footage, then, you know, the basement, what is really historic about the walls and the floor down there? But if you take it out and you change the design concept, it becomes much more usable without those historic walls, but we're not going to see until we get a plan. So, we can say, okay, I want you to do one floor plan of the building for us to consider without historic walls. We want one floor plan to show with them remaining. You know, even the, the entrance, you look at without the apparatus bay, you can move the handicap entrance to coming in from the north or from the access off the parking to the south into the apparatus bay that has a ramp going up to the main level, to save major construction that we'd considered in the past. You know, we can say we want one plan looking at an addition to the temporary apparatus bay, because right now, what we got, a garage is a garage, and if it's big enough for garbage trucks and it's working as fire truck EMS, ambulances, then that part should work. But, you know, you look at fifty-five hundred square foot that was in the program for living quarters and administration, to add on to that building in the same character, and you can take a pre-engineered building, put some overhangs on it, change your, your facade and, and make it look more attractive than what we've got so far, you can add to that without adding a lot of cost, but we're still, you know, in the, in the range of one hundred twenty dollars a square foot for office, pre-engineered building instead of two hundred dollars. But it can be finished out nice, it can give good working quarters, you know, it can function with the administrative, but, you know, we don't have to say, just give us one floor plan that we can look at.
No, I'm glad to hear that, I appreciate hearing that, because that's what, what kind of work
See, that's what we were here to talk about now.
Alternatives to trying to make this all work and still provide quality space. Now, again, we're not talking about elegant or, you know, great space, just quality space that everybody in the, in the community can be proud of and employees can be proud of. I mean, you're talking about your police and fire, especially here in the EMS building, your first responders. Like I said, what I've seen here, the, the bond issues that are in the past, the people, the, the community has voted for quality. The schools, they voted for, that took a few votes, but they got several great quality projects, and one restoring the middle school. The library, those employees got great workspace over there for them as well. And our expectations, again, we're looking down the road for fifty years, you want to, you want to have your facilities, it starts a quality space so your employees can have that, not only commit their time, but their hearts and minds, that they have, they feel valued coming to work, that, yeah, we provided a, a good space, we value them, we appreciate them, and that provides, obviously, a motivation for them to continue with those things on the, on the wall back there, those four things, commitment, excellence, and teamwork. Space makes a difference, environment, work environment makes a difference with employees and can affect productivity and morale. And that's what we're concerned about, and I'm glad to hear we're talking about different options, because, I mean, I've been involved in two city hall historic buildings, and when you talk about interior walls, well, we didn't worry about interior walls, we gutted the insides. The historic part was the outside, and that was the important, and we, you know, obviously kept that. But we, to get a good floor plan, to make it work the best way, gut it and start over. And, and, and that's, I mean, that's what I'd recommend. I don't know what the historic walls are, what they mean in this facility, but
I think that's some of the things that we're at the point of looking, instead of trying to work within set walls, space function is primary. When you look at the building, the main entrance would be probably the only thing significant with the terrazzo, the granite wall, wainscote, but as far as majestic, it's, it's utilitarian for the age. But that's probably the most that would be any idea of trying to conserve. I think when visiting with Vance and Ian at this stage was since we don't know if, if some of the walls will work for offices, conference rooms, or that, why tear them out now to build them back? Let's identify what the end space is going to be, and then we'll look at whether they come out or not, and look at the cost to lose space because of those compared to tax credits and evaluate it at that. And, you know, I, I guess, the word quality space, you know, as an architect, anytime you're going into a remodeling, our end result is to have quality workspace. And quality workspace is such a broad term, and it's accomplished by so many elements to get it, the, the proportions of the room, the volume, the airflow, the lighting, the colors, the textures, so much of that makes that space that any space can be designed to be attractive and comfortable and appealing to work in. And, you know, I, I don't see a building shell being a restriction, just like, you know, a pre-engineered building. Back in the seventies, when they came out, my goal was to never use one because of what they were, the limitations in how they looked. Now, that's my first choice because of the ease of construction, the total volume you get, how quick it goes up, and the flexibility. I've used a pre-engineered building that's got seven gables, nailable roof, brick veneer, copper gutter, four-foot overhangs, round windows, and you drive by and it's not going to look like a pre-engineered building. I've used another one that we've got some facade on the front, we use metal roof, standard metal building components for the gutter, the soffit, the back is metal siding, it, it works. The, the buildings are, are great to give you that low initial cost, the insulation values, you keep your construction, your maintenance, operational costs down, they're, they're good, you know? I wouldn't hesitate to use a pre-engineered building, and even addition to what's there now, could function and provide really good space inside for a work environment. So, you know, I think where we're, we're at the point of talking with some direction for the preliminaries to start looking at dollars, the numbers that I've been running for what was programmed for fire EMS operational spaces, you know, with fees and contingency is eight to nine hundred thousand is easy. But that's Andy and Vance's job, but it, it starts pulling our sixteen million or twelve and fourteen million down to something manageable, and it starts getting tax relief that we can put money elsewhere, and it gives us operating and it starts getting tax relief that we can put money elsewhere and it gives us operating expense. And even, you know, you look at the renovation costs, we had existing city hall from three million. You know, you look at, at a project in, in that range. So, you know, I think we're not going to know until we get in with the, the plan and look what can and what can't be done. And.
I look at, I'm not going to go back and revisit something either, but, you know, the, the school facilities, you know, the schools needed updated. There wasn't any question about that. You know, we, we tried three different bond issues and, and they considerably got bigger as they went along. And we ended up with forty-five point two million, which I believe the, the city taxpayers' responsibility was fifty-eight percent of the time and the state was going to pick up forty-two percent of that money. But we've got that extended out till twenty thirty-one and twenty thirty-two. That's one million nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars that goes to, for those improvements that we made in the school. Was that, I, I think, I think making an investment in schools is, is a good investment. Now, whether forty-five point two million dollars was what, what we ended up with, whether that was right, evidently there were enough people that felt that was it. But look at, look at the money that's tied up in the long term that we don't have any access to. That money goes to, to the educational, to pay for those facilities. So, and that's going on for, what, twenty, twenty-three years, twenty-two, twenty-three years? So, so, yeah, we, we want facilities that are, that meets the needs of the people that are going to be in that facility. But, but we, on the backside of that or the front side of that, we also have to look at how is this going to be paid out and still meet streets, still meet ADA requirements, still address facility issues in existing city buildings that we have that have not, have not been even addressed. We've looked through some of them. And so, you know, all these have to play into figure. But, but people that come to me and, and they're saying, how are you going to pay for this? How are you going to pay for this? And I don't want to see my, my property taxes go up. So, you know, everything's contingent on coming up with something that the public perceives as a reasonable dollar amount, that they feel like they're going to be able to handle. And, and so be it. They're the ones that are going to decide whether this is going to fly or not. And if it doesn't, we don't have a plan B. So, I, I understand, and I understand your concerns. When West door downsized, you know, my department went from seven people to three. When they, when they left the same position I held in Parsons, that guy wasn't working out and they let him go. And then they came to me and said, they asked me, do you think you can take on more responsibility? They said, you'll take on the territory and you'll, you'll double your workload. You'll be responsible for twice the electric metering that you had. You'll be responsible for the testing for everything involved in it. When I went over there, they had never made any allowances for, for my position. So, I used my boss's office, Don Hill, when he wasn't there. I used his desk and a computer to plug in. Was it ideal? No. I had to borrow space from the, from the storeroom so I could have enough space to put my material and meters and everything in it. Was it ideal? No. Did I make it work? Yeah. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying that, that did, you know, I, I put out quality work. That's, that's what I had to deal with. I dealt with it. I, I handled the responsibilities of that. I handled it when we had a flood. I handled it when there was a tornado in, in Parsons, when there was a flood here. I did all those duties. I didn't, I didn't ask for any, they weren't going to send anybody to help me anyway. So I did that. So, yeah, yeah, I, I, I see both sides of this. But, but it's got to be something realistic that we can look at and that we're going to have to be able to afford because this is going to go on for, for twenty years. I, I've got some information on that original four million dollar bond issue for the nineteen sixteen city hall, which I think was in twenty fourteen. And a twenty-year note, twenty-year bond payment on that was going to be, I would say somewhere in the vicinity of around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And at a thirty-year note, it's going to be a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars a year on, on, on four million dollar at that time in twenty fourteen, which was when those first plans come out and I've still got a copy of those. So, I mean, that, that's where I'm coming from. I, I think there's got to be some allowances made on everybody involved in order for this project to move forward.
And to want to make another thing clear, when we looked at the financing and so forth, one of our goals was not to eat up all that special use sales tax, obviously, because we do have those other needs you're talking about in other city facilities, in streets and so forth. You know the state of our infrastructure. And so our goal was to keep a certain level of funding there under different options so we would still have ADA money. Obviously, we have to keep that because we've got, as you'll see soon, a lot of ADA work to do at a, at a high cost. So we needed that. So anyway, we programmed or in that report, if you look at it, that we would maintain some funds to do that. Even Greg Berenberg of Piper Jaffray had the same thing, that you still left, you still left an amount for, for other city purposes. You didn't completely wipe out your funding for other capital projects. But there's a time to borrow money, as they say, you know. I mean, I came, I come from a very conservative place where, I mean, in fact, my last community, they wanted zero debt. That was the goal, no debt, no borrowing. But there's a time to borrow money. We buy, we borrow money when we, when we buy a house. Because we need, we need to have that facility, but you have to look at the value you're getting for that. Yeah, you're paying back a bond payment every, every year, but you're getting value. You're getting use for, for that money.
Andy, Vance, for the next phase, you know, we've kind of talked in general. So, going in to start actually looking at, at plans, what, well, I thought, you know, we've, it's been a while since we looked at the space program. That needs to come back out. And not only you review it, but we need to get familiar again with our space and looking at building. Of course, how we're going to utilize the nineteen sixteen facility. You don't see any problem with having quality space in that building, do you?
No, I certainly don't see any problems with that function, well into the future and giving you quality office space. There's no question in my mind that we can't make that work. And, and I, I think that Andy and I are here to make sure that we're helping you reach this conclusion. And like Andy presented, you know, that sixty million was sort of a big number with the goal that as you move forward in the design process, you would refine what that budget really needs to be in order to meet your needs. So Commissioner, when you talk about going back and revisiting the program, I think we agree, certainly we need to do that. And we do want to make sure that in order to make those decisions, that we work with the city manager and staff, that you're not anticipating having another steering committee, public steering committee involved.
I think with, you know, my concern, it, it's looking back at all the information we've had, the inconsistencies with numbers that we've been getting as commissioners. We've seen numbers on mold abatement, asbestos abatement up to as much as two million dollars. And it comes in that it's not toxic when it's really tested. And we're down to a bid of about twenty-four thousand.
Correct.
To do abatement. But, you know, we need to be involved a lot closer to get, to know where we're going to go the long run.
Right.
Because our numbers can't be presented to us like they have in the past, so we have no idea where we're going. And, you know, we're making critical decisions that are going to last beyond our lifetime and we need real, real numbers and to look at the impact. And one thing, you know, as we look at, at development of the nineteen sixteen building, then it gives us the option, if you do the, do it separately, we'll know, you know, is, what adjustments do we have to make if we have just a fire EMS facility?
Right.
With police and administrative offices in that building. And by doing two phases, it can give us better use of our money instead of going to extreme all at once. And since we do have that facility, we're using the building D. And, you know, even the party that was interested in it said that they were willing to lease space to us. It gives us an added cushion that we're not forced to jump. And as long as we have leased space in it, we're obligated to maintain it, to keep the utilities on it. It doesn't matter if we use a fourth of it or eighty percent. Operating costs are going to be pretty similar with the boiler and the chiller, the way they operate because you've got to have them cycling properly. You can't tone them down or turn them down because you're only using half the building. So, you know, we have some, some flexibility to look at, at phase three. You know, we don't have to jump all at once, but.
And so Commissioner, as you were talking earlier about options to be able to come, for us to come back and present to you, having clarification about what the priorities are for who would go back in the city hall is important. Knowing that fire and EMS would be somewhere else, that we don't look at the nineteen sixteen building for that. We do however, look to see whether police can go back in there as one of those options so that you have that comparison of how the historic building might be able to, to be used. One of the things, as we look at new construction, are you wanting us to look at with fire and EMS, are we to look at the addition that was talked about previously to the existing metal building as an option? And as another option, are you wanting fire and EMS across the street from city hall as another option? What are the types of options that you'd like us to look at to help tell you what those costs might be and the impact might be?
One of the problems you look at putting the fire station on Sixth Street is the traffic and it's narrower. Where it is on, on Myrtle, the street's wide, it's good access and there's not a lot of traffic that starts interfering with the entering and exiting of the fire trucks. And, you know, the grade difference is, is an issue for a drive-through, turning from the alley into a building with the length of a large truck, plus in the grade exiting out onto Sixth Street. If you lower the floor elevation to accommodate Sixth Street and you're underground and even getting a level floor, depends where you set it. If you set the floor elevation at the existing sidewalk, you're still below grade at the alley and then the slope. So, you know, that's some things evaluating that site. You know, ideally, we're, you're looking at at locations. The Lincoln School lot gives a lot of flexibility if you're going to relocate to a drive-through apparatus bay. And you've got Laurel and Myrtle, both large streets, gives you some options. But, you know, we're, we're dealing with, with costs and that's where, you know, studying. Because if you do a, an addition on to the apparatus bay, that plan is going to be pretty flexible. Because if you're going to do drive-through, you're not going to build behind the apparatus bay. You'd be building on to one end. You know, the, the problem with tearing that down and relocating, by the time you put the labor in to do that and you're looking at four hundred thousand, you could build a new, you're not going to save significant monies to relocate that building. So.
And so as options, but you do want the exploration of adding on to the existing apparatus bay to see whether that is a feasible site and cost? Is that one of the options that you'd like us to go back and, and take the design a little bit further? As well as the site across from city hall so that we can describe to you what, what it means because of the sloping site and how it might work and the cost?
I think that would be worth evaluating.
And the Lincoln School site, so I'm not familiar with it, are you?
That's just east of the, of building D where the helicopter landing pad is.
Okay. And, and should we explore that as a, so we would leave then the apparatus bay alone so that the city could deal with it as it had talked about either in the past or what it wants to in the future? Should we look at that Lincoln School site for the potential new construction for fire and EMS?
We don't own it, right?
James Phillips does.
So right now, that's probably not something you want us to explore?
That could be the next.
Okay.
But if the, I know we've always said it'd be nice to have the public safety building right next to city hall, but if the lot doesn't work, it doesn't work. I can't see, I cannot see investing a penny in a facility where we can't drive the equipment through the building. That would just be crazy to me, especially if you can't even pull out on the street because the slope is, is too severe. So, I mean, is that fixable or should we be looking at other locations? We've got empty lots all over the city.
I think that's what Vance was saying, they would evaluate the, the depth of the lot, the grade of the lot more, more in detail to see just what it would take to use that, that facility.
I mean, there's another factor, of course, when, when you talk fire station location, it's, it's not a matter of, well, there's an empty lot here, so let's build it here. I mean, you, you really should look, what's the best place in terms of response times throughout the city? We only have one station, so it's got to be centrally located. So the response time is the same in the far north end of town as it is in the south part of town? Anyway, it's just another aspect.
That makes very sense, but we've got to be able to pull in and out with our vehicles, so.
Exactly. And that, I mean, that's.
Lots of options. And I know people are always coming to the city commission saying, hey, I have an empty lot, can I give it to you because I don't want it? So, I, I imagine we could find a great location. It doesn't have to be right next door to city hall.
Yeah, and, and those lots may work. You just want to, working with the fire department, EMS, you want to look at those response times where that locate, you don't want to locate it too far north or anything and so forth. Just, just another aspect.
The depth of the lot becomes a problem is your larger apparatus is, if it's up to sixty feet and you look at the size of the building to accommodate it and then distance behind and in front of and in the alley to turn. Just a half a block is really tight. That's where if you can find a hole.
You know, we've got a new fire truck that will be arriving fairly soon. I don't know what the length of that is. Sean happens off the top of his head, but it's, you know, it's a new ladder apparatus that's, that's especially when you need drive-through and you need the space to do that, that drive-through apparatus bay.
And if I may, the drive-through apparatus bay are, well, a lot of times they're used for pull-through. They're used more often to actually arrange apparatus to get out without having to move other apparatus. So if you think about your existing, you have trucks that are backed in there. If I need that truck out, being able to go out. If I need that truck out, being able to go out both ways allows me to position things in a more economical manner. So it's not always just for a pull-through bidding.
Right. Good. But right now, it looks like two, two sites to explore for the public safety building of fire and EMS. And then we'll know what the advantages and disadvantages of those two sites are. We'll know what those potential costs are. And if there are limitations that really doesn't make sense for it to be located there, then the commission would have the opportunity to say, no, okay, the next step is, let's go find a site that's appropriate because of response time and location, street, all of that. And we could look at that then as a, a future step if these two sites have too many limitations for you. Okay?
Do you want us to check into to see if that lot might possibly be for stuff that you mentioned?
Well, I think we could, let's investigate the two we've got first and then, and then go from there.
Would you like our proposal to stop at that preliminary design stage? And, or would you like us to treat this as a whole project? With the assumption that one of those options would be selected and, and once approved by the commission, we could then move into schematic design, design development, construction documents?
I think we could, if you break it into phases, then it would give us a total picture. But if we decide we want to add in another step at, after preliminary, then we could always through an amendment add another step in there. But then we would be lined up because once you go, once one plan is selected, you would consider the next step, design development, not back to preliminary. So go design development on whatever plan we have.
Yes.
It's pretty much going to be consistent through construction, drawing, bidding, contract administration and, and as-built. We do want as-built figures in there.
We haven't really talked about putting this before the voters in any detail. Or are we thinking we'll put it on the ballot in November?
Renovation of City of 1916 doesn't need to go.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about new construction.
It depends on, on the options of the presentation if it goes before the voters. And if we can get, you know, I think the most critical phase is the preliminary design phase. And evaluating the, the options. We don't want to rush and not have the optimal plan. If these two don't work and we have to look at, at another site, we'd want time to, to do that.
Yeah, that makes total sense.
I think we want to have a, not an accelerated, but a progressive schedule. That we keep going forward, that we don't look at, you know. We had one project that it took a year to get it, get it through in a very simple phase. So we want to stay going forward, that we have time to review and analyze the data that comes to us. And, and then make a, a good presentation. Once we get a plan, if it's going to have to go to a vote, we want to educate the public. Give them plenty of time to look it over, give us feedback and explain the options and not just. You, you look now to get a plan to go if we're really going to consider the options. We could be, I don't know, maybe as far as June or July, looking at a floor plan. And then to try and get that turned around for a vote in November if we're having meetings and things. I don't, it might work out that we can, but if we go forward, we can just see where, where we end up.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm not clear when, I'm assuming the cost of the 1916 building, if we got everybody back in, police, except for fire, several million dollars. I was assuming we'd have to borrow for that. Doesn't that require a vote or for that bond issue?
I think in Charter Ordinance 11, there's some flexibility. We would need to research. I think we need to look at that option for that building. Charter Ordinance 11 gives us some flexibility on options. But I think statute does have in some requirements for new facilities that it does have to go to a bond. Or to a, to vote of the people. And I think the fire station EMS would need to have that election. But I think there's more flexibility on a renovation of the facility.
We'll look into it. So I understand.
But we need to look now at that if we're going to need to.
The school bond happened before I moved here, but I've heard you say that it took several times to get it to pass.
Yes.
So it sounds like at best, that will probably be the case. If we decide we want to build a new facility, that's going to have to go to a vote. It may take several tries also, or it may never pass.
Yeah, I mean, that's right. There's, there's no guarantee in any of this. But, you know, we have, we've reached a point that, you know, we need to come up with some, some solutions. We're past the point of, of just letting this continue to extend out. So, and that's, that's just the way it is.
And I think we got, I don't know if last time Vance, you mentioned we had some good bids on the phase one that it is under the estimate and gives some options.
Yeah, that's correct. We, we finished the review of the scope work that was under our purview. We are waiting for the review from the environmental assessment, the asbestos abatement bids. And then we'll package that up and send a letter to the city manager summarizing what the results are, making the recommendations. And then we'll come back for official presentation to everybody so that we can talk about it before it, it is awarded. Yeah. But, but all the bids, all the bids were, we have low bids that are under our original estimate, even when you look at including some of the add alternates as well. So it's very positive.
Good.
And on your proposal, you'll handle the historic tax credit as a, a option or as a?
Yeah, we, we'll break that out so you, that you have that as well in case you'd like us to perform those services. We do believe that the historic City Hall, we can come up with a very good design solution that still meets the standards through, for the state law, which will, those are the same standards that we're trying to meet for the tax credits. Because the tax credits are substantial enough that it may be in the city's best interest to make sure that that design complies. And, and we think it's certainly possible.
So in your first proposal, you didn't quote.
No.
The cost. Will you be able to do that in this proposal?
Yes, because we know the potential project within the historic building. We know the general scope, so we'll be able to provide that as one of those options that you can pick up initially, or you can decide to defer when that is, when you want us to do that.
Okay.
You need to, in order to pay for the, the 1916 City Hall project, you would have to get the special sales tax rate. So that vote would be determining on whether or not you could proceed with that, would it not?
That, that's why we need Piper Jeffrey to look at our funding.
Okay.
To get us a, a proposal to see how we are going to fund, fund that. You know, the, and it, it depends on, on cost and how we use our, our money, whether the building sells. There's a lot of ifs, but, you know, we need to.
And we would see that vote happening at the same time, the sales tax and the project. We'd, we'd have to, to, because you can, you can vote on it anytime. You don't have to wait obviously till 2022 or 2021. But you'd want to get that secured.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be, that'd be good to have it all lined out and included in one vote. Save the cost of two elections. So do we have?
So I, I think based on the discussion that we've heard this evening, Andy and I can go back and we can pull together an official proposal to the city and schedule a time then to come back and present that to you. My hope would be at the same time we present the scope of services for phase two, we would also be able to present the bid results on phase one. That way you have a, a full picture in front of you. That would be the goal.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Vance, thank you. Any, any gentleman, anything else?
On a, you won't get in, into any surveying or anything like that in the preliminaries? You're going to hold off and do that later on in the work?
I'm sure we can coordinate with staff on any existing, and then the beauty of Google Earth today. We can gather a lot of information.
We do have a local surveying company. If we can keep as much money local, we appreciate it.
We can do that. And, and if we need to, we can bring that as an additional service and bring that to the commission and let you move forward on that.
And we will move to B, which is concerns and issues that are pertinent to commissioners individually. There's certain things we've mentioned from time to time. And now's your chance to bring whatever it is up in open session that you'd like to talk about. I know you, in the past, have mentioned about it, about the possibility of a five-person office commission. If there's anything you want to talk about, now's your, now's your chance.
I'm good.
Okay? Okay. Leonard?
We had talked about getting, having meetings with like the county commissioner and other city commissioners. Since we're having this extra meeting, it might be the opportunity to move forward a little easier just with, with one at a time if we want. One thing that, the, the day before our bid was scheduled February 7th, I was talking to Director Public Works at the county. And they were talking about the cable that goes from tower to tower. And they're in the process of removing their tower, having it scheduled. And I thought, you know, it, it's ironic, that's part of our project and we're right next door. And how the two could have been piggybacked together. And, and they were talking about some tuck pointing and waterproofing too. You know, we're going to be right next door to each other. Maybe like for a March meeting, if one or the county commissioners would be interested in attending, maybe we can start bringing to the foreground maybe some areas that we could share, get their input. Are they interested or are they not? Because, you know, in, in that area of, of including their work into one project, it might have benefited both of us by making the project bigger and more attractive to other people in the trade of, of waterproofing buildings and exterior masonry repair. But, you know, there are so many things that were, were similar that we have need of that I think it's kind of like our feasibility master plan. We didn't put a limit to begin with. We used it as brainstorming to see what our options were that now we can fine tune. That maybe we need to do that with the county and the other municipalities to see what are things that we can share and come together to not keep duplicating services? Or is there ways that we can consolidate and improve the tax rate for both municipal and county individuals? You know, just give us a feedback. We, we're able to with the asphalt projects, pick up some, piggyback on to their bidding and, and got some really good pricing. So, you know, I think if we could use some of our meetings to open dialogue with the county, we could, and other cities in the county, maybe there's ways we can do that, help each other out a little while.
When I first came here and, you know, we had a group of all the cities meeting monthly. And we were actually been talking about trying to get that going again. Because we had people, representatives from, from KNE, from Coffeyville, Cherryvale County. And we met monthly and talked about the very things you're talking about. So.
Could it just stay out?
Yeah.
Well, we, we had, the last one we had, we had a cybersecurity training for that one. And then, you know, Kendall and Brooke collapsed, so they had some transition there. And we just haven't gotten it back together. It's not that we're not planning on doing it again, it's that there was some transition going on.
So it's been effective in the past?
Yeah, I mean, that's how we did the asphalt thing, how that came about. We did, Green Bush came and gave a presentation. We were able to save quite a bit of money on a copier from a program that we all shared in. So, I mean, we also use it like we did for the cybersecurity where they, Rick brought this security training and several of us participated in that. And, and then there's other levels of that as well. Like we're working with the county GIS and they're working with the other cities on some, some GIS things that they're doing. And so we're doing it on kind of some sub-levels as well. And they're looking at some addressing and things like that.
Leonard, I, I love everything you said and I've always felt like we need to coordinate better with our, our neighbors. But, you know, if we could have one county commissioner come to our meeting once a year and sit through it, that's, to me, that's not as effective as a regular meeting or some kind of regular communication between the staffs. Again, I have no clue how to make that work. And I, I would love to have a meeting with other city commissioners or county commissioners if we can pull it off. But logistically, I don't know.
And with our meeting, it would be easier to invite them to come to our extra meeting, just like we did tonight, than to try and get everyone together, at least initiate the, the dialogue on the, the commission level because there's things that we can share with each other.
Right.
And then, you know, of course, encourage them, the staff to, to meet and continue the trainings and, and like you have in the past.
We could certainly extend the invitations. All I can do is say no. I would love to, to make that attempt.
Yeah, that seems like that there's, there's ways that we can come together. You know, you look at the population of Montgomery County, we're not, we're kind of a moderate-sized town in population. So number-wise, it seems like there could be efficiencies to operate with departments. Or like you said, you know, even with the GIS, maybe go a little stronger that we give them the data and they, they do the GIS entry for us. And, you know, we, we work closer so that, you know. And, you know, we, we work closer so that, you know, you've got one flow of maps, you've got one consistency, and, you know, then it alleviates us of having to enter things in to our system. But, you know, that would, I think sometimes you got to try things to find out that they don't work, or at least try it and then refine it, that it becomes productive. So, you know, I just thought maybe for March, we could extend to the county commissioners and-
For the March, for the March work session or special meeting slash work session, we want to, we can extend that invitation.
Right.
All right, we'll do that.
Maybe they got ideas for us, too, you know? It's a two-way, two-way street.
Just the county commissioners, not the other two cities?
Yeah, let's just start with county commissioners and see how, how it goes. It might be more productive to look at individual than everyone all at once.
I agree.
And at that time, would we, would we structure it to where we would make it at a 5:30 time like we did this particular meeting?
It's up to you. Probably it'd be easier for them to be at a 5:30 versus a 9:00 AM. Well, actually, the county, they always meet at 9:00.
They meet at 9:00, yeah.
Yeah.
They, they paid. We got into the availability of rooms, because I know they're, they're booked out in advance of that, that was the issue for changing this from a 9 o'clock meeting in this particular building or off, or room, because it was already allocated to someone else.
I don't know if he put it on the schedule yet, but-
I think he has put it on the schedule. I didn't hear of any conflicts in March, but I'll double check.
Okay. Okay, so it, it may end up being at 9:00 in the morning?
What a-
Or, see what, see what, if it's available.
If you wanted to have it at 9:00 in the morning, I mean, we can find space in this building somewhere.
Yeah, if we're, if we're flexible, let's just meet, see what's going to-
That was the plan, 9:00 AM, you know, on-
If 9:00 AM works for them, then, then fine, let's start with it and we can always adjust.
Okay, but not, but not recorded as we originally talked, or do you want to record that as well? Just so we know the schedule or-
We all look at it this way. It involves possible inter-local cooperation between the, the governing entities of the county and the city, and I think at that point, probably would go ahead, and that's my own opinion. The gentlemen have different ideas, but I think at least that gives the people a chance to see what the special meeting was about and get a chance to review it at, at that particular time, or they want to come in at 9:00 in the morning or whatever, sit down and listen, that'd be up to them. But if we're going to discuss items that, regarding county, city functions, how we're going to cooperate, I think that the people need to hear what the discussion is and what we're contemplating and, and if they want to give input, then that's fine. That's my opinion, gentlemen.
Yeah, I'm not opposed. Have, have you got any information? There was a House bill, I think Monday it was open, a public session or a public forum for discussion that was being proposed to make it mandatory that meetings be recorded? Did you receive any information?
I haven't seen any, maybe Kelly has. I haven't seen any further. I mean, I know it's out there, but-
I, oh, I saw it's the, the members on it, and it's not just commission, it's all, it's all meetings of any city board.
And how long you have to retain, retention time and, you know? But I haven't seen any updates or status of where that, where that is.
What I heard was that the leak was, posed, they were going to argue against requiring it, we can kind of, that's pretty significant. I think it, like you said, it translates planning and zoning, park board, anything that has a quorum.
Acquires minutes, minutes and-
So, that was all I had.
I'll check on that.
Okay. I only just wanted to make a, a comment and, because I didn't want you two to be surprised. And I've, and I've worked with Jeff on this, but we're going to have a legal counsel from the Kansas League of Municipalities come down. Eric Smith, the city's SAP is working to arrange a date and time for him to come down, and he's just going to give us an overview of, of commission role. And I've dealt with him, and, and I think he'd be a good presentation presented for us, and it kind of give us a refresher on, on what our role and responsibilities are. So, just want you two to be sure, you hear it from me, so you're not, not wondering where this came from, so.
I think in a regular meeting? Or a special-
Well, this will be, I think we looked at it, or looked at it as a, as a special session, and it'll give us time to sit down and, and ask questions that we might have, and it'll involve the city manager, Jeff, and the city staff. It'll get a good chance for us to, to go back and review questions and things that we have, and I think it'd be good for us.
I agree.
So, so now you know. You've heard it from me. And that's, that's really all I have. So, with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn?
Second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you for being in attendance tonight.